Now we'll move on to conduct of business. Item A, City Clerk, please.
Item 6A, waive first reading and introduce an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Bruno, amending and re-adopting portions of Title 10 of the San Bruno Municipal Code, including a disposable food service ware ordinance.
Now we'll turn this over to our City Attorney, Mr. Zaffarano.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. If you'll just give me a moment to share my screen, I'll start the presentation. Is everyone able to see the screen? Excellent. Right, well, welcome. And you'll see that also present with us is Jacinta Lang, a management analyst with the Public Works Department. And we're all very excited to have her here tonight. She is actually the main event for the revisions to this ordinance. But I'm going to kick off the presentation and then I'll turn it over to her because the most important part of tonight's presentation is an ordinance that she has been working on with the County of San Mateo and other cities regarding disposable food service ware. So let's start out briefly and go over the agenda. We're going to go over a little background. We're going to discuss and introduce some of the amendments, the Title 10. And as I mentioned, there'll be a separate staff presentation, so you won't have to listen to me for very long, regarding the disposable food service ware ordinance. And then we'll talk about next steps. Finally, we'll take any questions regarding the chapters in Title 10 that we're addressing tonight. So we're doing... Well, let's go back and briefly review what we've done. So the City Council started this project to revise the municipal code back in late 2018. And there are 11 titles. Title 12 is the zoning code, and that's being separately updated. And as we recall, the primary focus is to update it for internal consistency and current law. And of course, we've had numerous policy discussions about many of the provisions of all of the titles that we've gone through so far, culminating with Title 7 this evening. And I appreciate the City Council's action on that. So we're doing something a little bit unusual tonight. We're taking Title 10 out of order. And you might wonder, well, what happened to Titles 8 and 9? And the answer to that is those are being deferred primarily because it was important, from a timing standpoint, to bring this ordinance to you now for disposable food service ware. Important caveat, there are two sections of Title 10 that we are going to come back with later this year, actually. It's titled, it's a chapter 10.16 about water conservation and 10.22 to implement a new state law regarding recycling and so on. So staff is working on those ordinances as well. And we, the City Council, needs to review various plans regarding water consumption and conservation before 10.16 can be approved, and we have some additional work on 10.22. So you'll see those coming to you later this year. And then at that point, we'll be finished with Title 10, and we can go back to the remaining three titles. So let's take just a moment to look at Title 10. And the good news is that we're really only proposing three very minor amendments to three of the sections in Title 10. So there are 16 chapters. 10.04, there is a minor amendment there. Nothing in 10.08, again, a minor amendment in 10.12. And that was amended already in 2012, so that's fairly recent. And then we don't have any amendments proposed to 10.13. That was most recently amended in 2014, so again, quite recently. And then 10.14 for water, we don't have any amendments proposed there. 10.15, again, no amendments. We amended that in 2016. Water conservation, that's the one that we're going to come back to you on later this year. 10.18, stormwater management, we're not proposing anything to that. 10.20, garbage and refuse, that's the second one that we're coming back to you later this year on. And then 10.21, sustainable food packaging. And when I'm done with my presentation, I'll turn it over to Jacinta. She has a separate presentation, and I'll stop my screen sharing, and she can put hers on. 10.22, we have some minor amendments on that, and no amendments for 10.23. 10.24, which is municipal cable, nothing on that. Nothing on reusable bags, that was amended relatively recently. Estate video franchises, that was amended in 2008, which is recent enough. And the Community Choice Aggregation Program, which was amended in 2016, nothing, nothing is proposed there. So let me go, actually, I'm going to jump to my very last slide so that way we don't have to put my presentation up after Jacinta's is over. It's kind of clunky to do that. And I'll just let you know where we hope to end up tonight after her presentation. So we want to review the proposed amendments. We're recommending that you waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance. Or alternatively, if you have some substantive revisions, we're happy to consider those and reintroduce those revisions at a subsequent meeting. Jacinta will be telling you shortly that the county is going to be providing education enforcement for those jurisdictions that adopt a disposable foodware ordinance. And then finally, adoption of this ordinance would be scheduled for the next regular City Council meeting. And all of the amendments would go into effect 30 days after adoption, except for the food service ware ordinance, which is proposed to not go into effect until October of 2022. And Jacinta will explain why that is. So after the City Council completes Title 10, we'll have three more titles, 8, 9, and 11, after Title 10 is complete. So that concludes my presentation. I'm going to stop my screen sharing. And I'm going to then ask Jacinta to start her presentation on the disposable food service ware ordinance. Take it away.
All right, thank you, Mark. I will be sharing my screen now. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay. And can everyone see the screenshot all right? Yes, okay, thank you, Mark. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. My name is Jacinta Lang, and I am the Management Analyst for the Public Works Department. Today, I will be introducing the proposed disposable food service ware ordinance, which will amend our current title, Chapter 21, which is the Sustainable Food Packaging Ordinance. I also have with me today Inso Lim from the County Office of Sustainability, who is currently spearheading this collaborative county effort. And we will both be available to any, I will both be available to answer any questions after the presentation. Okay. So agenda, we will be talking about the goals of the ordinance. I'll be providing a little bit of background information, some details about the county ordinance, and then our proposed city ordinance provisions. So our goal tonight is to provide you information about the county's disposable food service ware ordinance in hopes of bringing this, or in hopes of bringing the city ordinance for adoption at our next regular council meeting in September. So about a handful of cities have already adopted along the peninsula, and we're hoping that San Bruno can be next in line. Some background information, in August 2008, City Council adopted a resolution eliminating disposable food service ware composed of polysyrin, which is styrofoam, from restaurants and food vendors. And this ordinance was adopted due to the harmful negative environmental impacts that styrofoam had along littering streets, harming wildlife, and toxic chemicals. Since the adoption of the ordinance, there's been an increasing concern in the community over the impact of disposable food service ware, especially items that are made from plastic. And in February 2020 last year, the county repealed its existing styrofoam ban ordinance, and they replaced it with a more sustainable ordinance because, one, plastics end up in storm drains, the waterways, and it leads to the bay and pollutes the ocean. And about 1.3 million pounds of trash enters the bay every year. And this debris is ingested by marine animals and wildlife. And disposable food service ware, such as containers, cut cups, lids, straws, they make up 80% of the ocean plastic pollution. So the adopted county ordinance requires the use of compostable foodware and reduces the wasteful distribution of accessories, such as straws, condiment packets, utensils, and napkins. And the main goals of the ordinance is, one, eliminate disposable food service ware that is not reusable or compostable; two, to improve the health and safety of our community members; and three, to help the county meet its regional stormwater permit requirement by reducing street litter. And this has to be done by July 2022. So this ordinance impacts food facilities that operate in the city that provide prepared foods for public consumption. So examples of these food facilities include restaurants, mobile food facilities such as food trucks, temporary food facilities, such as street fairs and farmers' markets, catering events. And there are some healthcare facilities and private schools. Public schools are exempt from this ordinance. And as mentioned earlier, the ordinance will target food facilities that prepare food for public consumption. So this includes any food or drinks that are prepared on-site. And it does not target processed food that has already been prepackaged by the manufacturer. So if you pick up a sandwich or already a salad that's been prepackaged from Trader Joe's or supermarket, those are fine. So under the proposed city ordinance, styrofoam is still prohibited, same as our current, same as currently in our existing ordinance. Accessories such as straws, condiment packets, utensils, and napkins will only be provided to consumers upon request or at self-service stations. And these accessories and any packaging that these accessories come wrapped in, they should be made from nonplastic and compostable materials. Also, plates, bowls, cups, trays, clam shells, and other takeout containers, they should also be nonplastic and compostable as well. And the county is recommending that we shift away from plastics altogether. And acceptable materials that food vendors could use are fiber-based products such as paper, bamboo, wood, wheat products. The county will have a available list of materials that comply under the ordinance, and that is on their website, and is also on our city website as well. It's linked towards their main website. And under this ordinance, there are a couple of exemptions. So one, disposable food service ware that is made from aluminum. Two, plastic straws, for example, they can be provided to consumers with medical reason, or if they have medical needs. And three, if there isn't a reasonable alternative that exists that meets the ordinance requirements, that is fine as well. And as mentioned earlier, there is a link with the, all the materials that are compliant under the ordinance for our food facilities and restaurants and any vendors in the city. And for this, the proposed ordinance is not expected to be operative and enforced until October 1st, 2022. So we have a little bit over a year. And this will give the facilities a chance to use up all of their existing inventory of non-conforming food service ware during this time. And as Mark mentioned earlier, the county will take lead in education and outreach and enforcement of the ordinance. And this concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions along with Inso from our county. And I'll, Mark, do you have any closing? Are you done with your Title 10? Okay, and that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you both for your presentations. Do we have questions from colleagues? And if there's any members of the public who'd like to speak on this item, if you could raise your hand at this time, and by state, we will go over and call on you. And first, we will have Councilmember Hamilton, please.
All right. So have we, so have we done some outreach to our local restaurants and local folks who are going to be impacted by this, just to get any kind of initial reaction from folks? And also, I know that some of our, some of our local restaurants are already complying with this, just but through their own choice. And do we have any types of numbers as to how many already are and how many would be compelled to change?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Hamilton. So last month, we sent 180 mailers in English, Spanish, and Chinese to all the affected food facilities. So we received the list from the county. And we haven't had any pushback. We've had a few questions from some restaurants who are just asking for clarification on whether certain items were going to be compliant or if certain items were going to be, or what other alternatives they'll be able to use. But we haven't had any pushback. It's been, most of the businesses have been in support of the ordinance, and a lot of them are already using this type of compostable foodware at their, at their premises and at their restaurants.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you. So my question was about the county's version of the ordinance. And typically, the county ordinances apply only to unincorporated areas. So is that the case with their ordinance now? And we're passing one to match what they're doing at that level?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Salazar. We are adopting the county's ordinance as a model. So the county's ordinance affects the unincorporated, unincorporated areas of the San Mateo County. And if the city were to adopt it, it would affect the food facilities and the food vendors in our city.
Okay. And does our, the provisions in our ordinance, are they largely in alignment completely with the county? Or are there areas that we are either less stringent or more stringent than their version?
We are completely in line with the county's model ordinance.
Okay. And, okay. And as far as what the other cities are doing, is it generally expected that all cities will fall in line with these things? Because I know one thing that, you know, if one city does it, it's fine. But we really need cooperation across the entire region to make it work because not all the garbage that ends up in San Bruno originates in San Bruno. It could blow in from any area, it could be tossed out of a passing car. You never know where it's going to come from. So I think it is important that everybody get on board. So do we have any information on what other cities might be doing?
Um, I believe so far about 10 cities have adopted. I think the only, I'll turn this over to Inso later to provide more detail. I believe only Half Moon Bay had a special provision, but I believe all the other cities adopted the same provisions as the county. And about right now, probably 10 have adopted and already brought it over to their city council. And there's probably a number that are bringing the ordinance to their city council for adoption in the next couple of months.
Great, great, okay. And just one last question. I noticed one of the slides, in terms of who it affects, it specifically mentioned private schools, but not public schools. Is there an exemption for public schools in there?
Um, Inso, do you have more information on this?
Inso, please, go ahead, if you have anything to offer on this question, or Councilmember's last question.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me be part of the discussion tonight on this ordinance. And to answer the questions, two questions, I think Jacinta did a great job in summarizing where the other cities stand. So as of today, there are 10 jurisdictions total, including the county, that has, that have adopted the ordinance. And we do have a few more cities that are currently in the midst of exploring, including San Bruno. And we have a few other cities that are in line and doing a lot of internal vetting. And it's actually really encouraging because majority of the jurisdictions that adopted, adopted it during the midst of COVID, which is inspiring. And it was absolutely amazing. And so that speaks to the importance of this, of this initiative and how important it is for the entire community within San Mateo County. And I completely agree that it should be a county-wide effort. And this is exactly the reason why the county is offering, really trying to motivate our city partners to, you know, join the wagon and adopt a model ordinance because ideally, we want something that's standardized and uniform across the entire county, so as to not confuse our community members. And so we're really trying to strive for that. And so far, majority of the jurisdictions have shown interest. It's just a matter of the timing. COVID kind of through complicated things, as you can imagine. And so in terms of adoption, the date, so majority of the cities that have adopted are in line with the enforcement start dates being March 2022, so in about seven months. Half Moon Bay actually started their enforcement. They were the first jurisdiction to start because they really wanted to bring it to the forefront because they have been seeing tons of plastic foodware on their beaches, and it was a very high priority for their city council members. We have a few cities that are starting to look at October 2022 enforcement. City of San Mateo has adopted that date. Jacinta and city staff here are recommending that date as well. And whatever date the cities, city jurisdictions choose, the county will be in support and will be in close collaboration with city staff to make sure that the rollout of the education as well as enforcement is aligned. And in terms of the second question, private schools versus public schools. So the reason we exempted public schools in the ordinance is because local governments, from what I understand, we don't have the authority to tell public school districts what they can and cannot do. That only resides, that authority, only the state has that authority. So based on a lot of diving and researching and talking to our county lawyers, they said we can mandate that the public schools follow and comply with the ordinance, but we cannot with the public schools.
And it was private, yes, public, no, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Councilmember? Yeah, I just wanted to remind folks too, is that, you know, the plastic bag, as far as not using plastic bags, is something that the county initiated and went to the communities to kind of keep the same, same verbiage so that it was universal and better accepted. And we were all on the same page, and I think that has worked out effectively. And I do like the October date, because I do remember back from the '08 was one of the things, this was a new topic. And so some of the restaurants were saying, hey, can you give us a little more time, A, to use our product, two, to find the right thing? Because back then, it wasn't what we have today as far as the opportunities not to use styrofoam and what we're replacing it with that would hold, so you could take that hot meal out. So that afforded our business folks that opportunity to use our product as well as find what fits for them. So I find that that's trying to adopt the county language is probably best, and I like the October date myself. Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for presenting tonight and hopeful and wishing you luck in getting all the other cities in alignment. I think that's really exciting, what you're working on. So thank you.
Okay, Mark, I feel like you've been left out here. Is any, any questions for Mark on the other item too that was presented in addition to this? And why we have everybody here? Any additional questions? I'm not seeing any members of the public at this time raising their hands. Not seeing any other hands up than, anything else you want to finish with, City Attorney?
Only to thank Jacinta and Inso Lim from the county for making that presentation and answering those questions on the disposable foodware service ordinance. And if the City Council would like to make a motion to waive first reading and then a separate motion to introduce the ordinance, we'll come back at the next meeting on the consent calendar for adoption.
Couldn't have said it better, as City Attorney has asked, is there any action on this item? First action would be to waive the first reading.
Do the chair all move that we waive the first reading?
Is there a second?
I will second.
Okay, okay. So, okay. Motion made and seconded to go ahead and waive the first reading. All those in favor say aye.
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 I have a 5-0 vote in order to waive the first reading. If I'm incorrect, please speak now. Thank you. And then if we could have action on introduction of the ordinance.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. A motion made and seconded. May we please have a roll call, City Clerk?
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, so 5-0 on that as well. And now, thank you to everyone for their presentations. We'll move on to the next item. Item B, please.
Item 6B, waive second reading and adopt ordinance enacting 1.87% rate increase for recology San Bruno garbage and recycling service to be effective October 1st, 2021.
Thank you very much. And at this time, are we turning this over to Director Ritchie?
This would be for Director Sun.
Okay, Director Sun, if you would, please. The floor is yours.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and a member of the council. Let me bring out the presentation first. Can you see my screen? Great. So this is to adjust the garbage rate effective October 1st, 2021. We actually talked about most of the content last week, so this is just going to be a refresh, refresh course. And I'll run through the PowerPoint slides pretty fast. And it's getting late, so we'll take it very long. The objective is the same as last week. We want to provide an overview of the recology rate application for the fiscal year 2122 and describe the review process, and the purpose is to waive the second reading and adopt a new ordinance enacting a 1.87% rate increase for recology effective October 1st, 2021. And the agenda, basically, will go over some background of the franchise agreement, what happened in the rate adjustment, and some historical rate comparison, and then give you a timeline and process we have done in accordance with Proposition 218. And then we will request a waiver of the second reading and ordinance adoption. And it goes to some detail, the franchise agreement. As we have talked about it before, the franchise agreement between the city of San Bruno and the recology started from July 1, 2098. And it will expire on June 30, 2024. This is for solid waste collection service. It covers billing, record keeping, billing fees, et cetera. And the current year rate adjustment is based on interim rate year adjustment. And the current year rate adjustment is based on interim rate year adjustment. Basically, the rate adjustment is purely rely on CPI adjustments. For the best fiscal year, the fiscal 2223, we will do a detailed rate year adjustment, which will be reviewed by independent consultants. This effective garbage service rate request increases 1.87%. New rate should be taking effect in the current fiscal year, but the effective date has been postponed by three months. So the effective date is actually October 1st. And the factor, as we talked about, was purely based on CPI calculation. And here is the last 12, 12 to 13 years of rate adjustment. The darker line are the detailed year rate adjustment and the gray line is the interim year and rate adjustment. The average interim rate year adjustment is about 2.23%. And for the upcoming, for this fiscal year, we only have 1.87%, which is lower than the average. And here I just give you a sample of residential and commercial rate comparison between what the customer is paying now and then what the rate is going to be effective October 1st. And for the most commonly used residential total at 32 gallons, the increase is only about 60 cents per month. Associate, Recology agreed to postpone the rate at the beginning from July 1 to September 1. The city had to revise it to October 1st because of some legal compliance issues with the ordinance adoption and then the effective timeframe. In, together with the postponed rate increase, Recology also proposed a pilot program, which was launched on July 1, 2021. What I'd like to point out to you is the last week, I may have given you some incorrect information. And thanks to the city manager, he pointed it out. So I want to recap the pilot the pilot program on the abandoned waste collection. So this program started on July 1, 2021. In this program, Recology will be collect and dispose specified abandoned waste during the regular business hours. The waste can be reported through the San Bruno Response. This is reporting application. And then also can be observed only in the public right of the way, allow Recology's daily trash collection routes around the city. And or and as observed during regular patrol of the hotspot, as which abandoned items are regularly or frequently deposited. The, this, the pilot program of this abandoned waste program will actually last about six months. And after that, Recology will determine whether additional staff will be, will be added to the program if necessary. We sent out a public notice on June 29th, providing the explanation on a hearing, public hearing schedule, protest period, approval process, rate adjustment, and proposed increase for different container types. As of August 18th, we have received, we only received 20 written protests from residents. And the requirement for 218 is a minimum of 50% of the residents in order for this rate increase to be, for the city, for the council to reject the rate increase. So we are well below the mandatory 50% requirement. This is a timeline. We are pretty familiar with by this timeline by now. The council director staff provided 45 day notice on June 22nd. We mailed it June 29th. Last week, we had the first reading. This, right now is the second reading. We asked the council to adopt. If the council adopts the ordinance, the rate will become effective on October 1st. So as staff, we recommend the council waive the second reading and adopt ordinance in 1.87 rate, 7, 1.87% rate increase for Recology to be effective October 1st. And I'm here to ask any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you, Director, for your report. Members of the public, if you wish to speak on this item, if you could raise your hand at this time. And if I could turn to my colleagues, if there are any questions on the presentation. Not seen any hands from the community at this time. Is there any action by council?
You have a comment?
Oh, you, oh, there. Councilmember Mason?
Thank you. So I appreciate Recology's review of council's request to cancel rate increases this year, even though the request was not granted. Although thankful for the postponement, I can't support an increase this COVID-19 year, where the pandemic has impacted so many and the true results from those struggling are yet to be seen. Aside from the belief that the timing of this increase, as the Delta variant is increasing, is not right for our community, I'm also disappointed that Recology has not yet prioritized adhering to its contract term dedicated to an annual fundraiser for our local schools. At last year's hearing on May 12, 2020, I posed a number of questions regarding contract adherence that both had to do with city community benefits and the school districts' benefits. And have since discussed this with staff. A number of the questions raised revolved around Recology's 24-year contract with San Bruno and the benefits of the community that result from the contract outside of the standard franchise fee. Since that hearing, Recology has provided some wonderful enhancements that have produced great results, including the fall and spring cleanup envisioned by past council member Davis and the abandoned waste program envisioned by city staff in Recology. As a council member, I want to thank you for working with staff and other members of the council to initiate these ideas and follow through with the community benefits portion that benefit our city. However, one of the greatest needs in our community are our schools. This was first raised as an issue over a year ago and has been brought up since then, and I have checked on its progress throughout the past year. Schools were open all last year in San Bruno, and even with remote working, the district office and school offices were open for drop-ins. We need to ensure that all terms, especially those that are meant to benefit our community, especially our local schools that are suffering so much right now financially, are being adhered to, especially once they have been brought to our attention and there has been sufficient time to address the lack of adherence over the past 23 years. Thank you, and I will not be supporting this, this increase tonight.
Any other comments or questions from colleagues? Vice Mayor Medina?
Yeah, can staff or if Recology is here, discuss a little bit about what the amount of money typically is involved for the fundraising? What amount are we talking about and just just to hear a response from Recology on Councilwoman Mason's comments, that would be helpful to understand what the other side of the story is.
Let me just check with city manager, is, I just saw your mic go on, so that's why I was suggesting you and or whom you might feel to answer that.
Sure. Through the mayor, Vice Mayor Medina, my recommendation would be we not get into the specifics of the, of the contract tonight. We will be going into discussions with the city council about the future of the city's garbage franchise. I will be sending the city council with the schedule of that. It is a very long process, and we do need to begin in early 2022. With regard to the recycling coordinator and the work that is done with regard to that position, that is a component of the contract that is, I know that there are questions. The city and Recology have been talking about that. And I just think that that's more appropriately to talk about at a later time when we're talking about the contract and all the sections. Tonight's agendized item is a rate increase based on the contract provision for interim years, where there is a increase based on the CPI. We do have Kirsten Pinoki from Recology here. Should she like to provide any additional feedback, I just wanted to note that she is in the room.
I have a question for our city attorney then, while we're.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor. I didn't get the mute off. Sorry. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, so for our city attorney, I know we go through that, we've gone through this a few times about the contract language. And, and at this point, we are here to do our part in complying with the contract language. That for the city council to not, what are the consequences for the city not granting this increase?
Oh, right, as we've discussed before, the contract does require that we have annual rate adjustments, and it allows the city to bet the amount of those adjustments, which the city has done in this year and in all prior years, as far as I know, to make sure that the, that Recology is asking only for the rate adjustment that they are allowed to receive under the contract. The questions, I think, as the city manager indicated about other non-financial contract provisions is something that appears will be addressed separately.
And it's, and it's your recommendation that we, that we comply with our contract?
I, I always recommend that all parties comply with contracts.
Right. And, and, and the, the likely consequence would be that if the city doesn't approve this, this rate increase, that Recology would still be able to obtain that increase just the city would pay for.
Well, so, right, not to speculate about Recology, what they might or might not do. I think that there would certainly be some risk in the city not, not approving the agreement and would perhaps call the city in a default of the, of the contract, under some circumstances, anyway.
Understood. So just for the public, I, I, I'm, I'm clear what I'm going to do here. But for the public to understand if there's anything outside of this, these terms that we're voting on, if there's something that isn't proper allegedly on a contract, that could be resolved at what, at what time?
So normally, the non-financial terms of the contract have various provisions about notice and opportunity to cure and so on, so that those non-financial provisions can't always be used as a, as a lever to extract other financial concessions from that part of the contract. And so, you know, there are various provisions in the agreement. I know that Councilmember Mason is, is asked for a review, and that's an operational staff issue that I'm not addressing. I'm only indicating that in general, the, the financial provisions and the requirement for the city to approve those, those increases, so long as they are complied with the contract, are in the contract. And I recommend that the, the city council does approve them under these circumstances.
Thank you for that clarification. So I will be supporting this. However, I really want to hear sooner than later, what progress is being made on the additional items that Councilman Mason is, is bringing up. So those are my comments for now. And Mr. Mayor, it's all yours.
Thank you. Councilmember Mason, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to let Vice Mayor Medina know that in looking into when the last fundraiser was for schools, nobody could actually remember. So, you know, I think that says a lot.
And Mr. Mayor, if I can just go ahead and, understood, and, and we need to get to the bottom of it. And things happen with long contracts. And I do want to thank you for bringing it up. I still believe that I am required, I could vote no, yes, but I, but, but based on the information provided before me, I, I, I'm, I will be voting yes. And, but we still need to look into the items that you're bringing up and make sure everything's made whole. So, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from colleagues? If, if not, I would just, Vice Mayor, thank you for asking the questions that you did. We honor a contract. Councilmember Mason, you've asked a question. And I know this is not a fundraiser, but I, I certainly appreciate the codes for kids or the compost and those other elements, or this trial period that Recology is doing. But yes, if there's something in the contract that needs to be solidified, I think that should be, and there should be some kind of a, a response. But I will be supporting this at this time. Seeing no other hands from the community or from my colleagues, the, there is an action. And if to proceed forward, it would be to waive the second reading. Is there any action?
Motion to waive the second reading?
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any noes? So, I'm, so no. So we have a four one on not waiving the second reading. Since we have a clear majority, the second reading does not have to be read in its entirety. So we can move on to the, any action on the adoption of the ordinance.
Motion to approve the ordinance?
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. City clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
No.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries. Four to one.
Thank you for your presentations and reports this evening. Now we'll move on to item seven, comment from council members. Council members, if you have comments for this evening, if you would raise your virtual or even physical hand is fine. But Councilmember Hamilton?
So I want to remind the community that there's a, a great opportunity for folks who want to serve the San Bruno community. The San Bruno Community Foundation has openings coming up on its board, and applications are being accepted now for the San Bruno Community Foundation Board. There's a brochure with all the details available on our city's website at sanbruno.ca.gov/sbcfboard. The applications are due by 5:00 PM on September 17th. And this is a great opportunity to get involved and have a voice in your community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Mason?
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. The first is hopefully we can get a response to one of the public commenters earlier around the city. And it's, I guess, response to COVID, including requirements for staff. We're hearing a lot in the news. It's actually all over the news now that the FDA has approved Pfizer. It would be good to have a, an update on whether we're requiring regular testing. Are we, will there be a requirement for vaccinations? Just some kind of a report to the council on what the city is, what the city's plan is. I also wanted to note, just wanted to say thank you. The new city net bill looks great. I'm not sure who worked on it, but great design, very clear. So whoever, whoever's behind it, great job. I also wanted to thank, I believe it's Sandeep. I know it was a pet peeve of mine that I had to go to on demand and click on these two different kids in kids junior sections. And somehow it's been fixed, and I'm sure somehow is Sandeep and the team over there. So very much appreciated. Thank you. I also wanted to highlight something, since Superintendent Espinoza was on earlier. If anybody has friends, family that are interested in working for the school district, we know, as he mentioned, you know, we are a lower paid district. But we have a lot of openings here in San Bruno, and it's not just the San Bruno.
here in San Bruno, and, uh, it's not just the San Bruno Park School District, but the city will be having openings as well, and hopefully you get the word out that we're looking for people to, um, commit to the city. And I think it's a, it's a really exciting time to be either in the district or with the city. So please spread the word. Um, and then lastly, I don't know if there needs to be mutual council comment, I mean, uh, mutual council consent or need to agendize this, and I can talk to, uh, Attorney Zaffrono maybe tomorrow or after this, but, um, exactly when, uh, when, when does the city attorney believe that it is the city's right to ensure that its contractors are adhering to its contracts? Um, I think that just as important as it is for us to adhere to our contracts, it's also just as important that we ensure our contractors adhere to the provisions in their contracts. Um, and so I'd, I'd like to find out whether that's a memo that can be written to us, um, or that needs to be a closed session. I'm not quite sure, but, um, I think it's important that the contract goes both ways. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, and just, uh, Superintendent Espinoza is still on the line with us, so thank you for staying. And Vice Mayor Medina?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just wanted to let everybody know, um, this coming Thursday, uh, second harvest grocery distribution will be at Bel Air Elementary at 453rd Avenue. Uh, it will, um, people start lining up a little bit before 2:00. Um, it goes on from 2:00 to 4:00. Um, this will be the last month where it will be on the Thursday. It is now moving to Wednesdays, but, uh, we will be there, um, to, to help our community. And, um, if you or anybody, uh, needs any help with food, I mean, you could, they take signups right there on the spot, and, uh, and nobody gets denied. So, um, if you need food, come and get it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, seeing no other hands up, um, I also wanted to make note of the city net bill as well. I noticed that and had to do a double take because I go, okay, this is different. So, uh, but I like it. I think it was clear, concise, and, and easy. So, um, I want to acknowledge that as well. In regards to the email that was brought up by a prior speaker, uh, we'd already received an email from our city manager that has had the letter, is working on a response, uh, to us on that. Um, other than that, if, uh, just to let you know that obviously this Friday is, um, again, the groundbreaking at 5:30, San Bruno City Park at the pavilion, as well as the final band at 6 o'clock. So, um, wish everyone the very best between now and then, and hope to see you on Friday. With that, we will go ahead and adjourn to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held September 14th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Thank you very much. Take care and good night.